Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me on Zoom? Okay, great. Well, I have to unmute you when you're ready to go. Okay. This is a meeting of the Town Council Committee on Health and Human Services, and we're meeting today with the Health Department. We have a new Health Director. We want to welcome Amy. And we're going to have some other agenda items coming up. So I think we'll start with turning it over to Amy, just to tell us a little bit about how things are going in the Health Department and anything that you think the public should know.
Sure. So hi, I'm very excited to be here. My name is Amy Lanini. I'm the new Director of Health. I've been municipal public health for over 20 years now, so I've been around. The department is going great. The staff here is fabulous and have been so helpful. And I brought Shannon along with me because there's a lot of questions she probably can answer better than myself at this point. She's been here. And we're looking forward to, you know, working together and building the department and seeing and making sure we meet all of New Canaan residents' needs.
Great. Well, welcome and thank you so much for deciding to work here. I think the next item, unless you have anything to add in it, is our tick update. And Shannon and I have talked about this. You had a wonderful meeting in Waveney. Maybe you could talk a little bit about that. And I know that's a concern of residents as well as Town Council, just what's going on with the tick population and finding, you know, ticks that are positive for Lyme's disease and things like that.
Yeah, so we have definitely had an increase in ticks and middles, where that means a resident has come with what they think is a tick to drop off for testing for the state. The state lab tests deer ticks only. So me and Amy actually can identify the ticks. So to kind of unburden the state, we actually have been trying to identify them in the office first, before we then send them off to the state lab. So the numbers you see when we talk about ticks and middles are the ones that actually we sent up to the state. We're getting quite a bit more people coming in and then us not turning them away, though, just saying, hey, this isn't a deer. This isn't a deer tick. The state's not going to test it. And we don't want to overwhelm their system.
Can I ask a question? Is the other tick a dog tick?
It could be a lone star tick. It could be a dog tick. What other ticks have you seen?
We've seen things that are not ticks, beetles, spiders.
Spiders. So is a lone star tick tested?
No.
No. So only what you identify as deer ticks are the ones that carry Lyme disease and those are sent to the state?
Yeah, they can carry, the other ticks can carry diseases as well, but it's so unlikely for them to that the state doesn't even test them. So that's why only deer ticks are tested and they're not just tested for Lyme, but tested for Babiosis, Anaplasmosis, Bartonella, I think, Oryculousis, Borrelia, yeah, and Hawson. And Hawson. So there's quite a number of other tests that they run. Primarily, if they're getting a positive, it's usually Lyme and sometimes Babiosis or Bartonella, which has similar symptoms and treatments to Lyme disease. And really, we're just trying to educate the public about prevention of the tick bite itself. It's gonna be inevitable, if you're outside, to probably come across one, but if you're doing thorough tick checks, that's really like what we're trying to advocate for, not so much as like pesticide spraying and stuff like that. I did do, I've done quite a few educational talks about tick-borne illness. This year, I did a more recent one at Waveney House. I had quite a few people sign up in that. That many people actually showed up. I had, I felt like I can't remember exactly how many I had signed up, but I knew around of 25 to 30 people that were going to come. I didn't have that number when we did the actual presentation. I don't know if it was because it was raining or...
When was it?
It was June 17th at 11:00 AM. So me and Amy were discussing that some of these talks probably should happen in the evening, after hours, probably.
And what's the demographics of people who show up?
I actually had some town staff that were running like parks and recreation camps and some things like that. And then most of the time, though, over 65.
So for the public, if you had to sum up the top three prevention strategies, could you just state them now so people know? And one of the questions I want to ask, and one of my understanding is that when you do go out in nature, whatever, to try to do the tick check right away, because if you wait, then that becomes more of a problem.
Yeah, so my top three that I probably always say is stay away from the edge of trails, because ticks are edge creatures and they're attracted to vibration and sweat and carbon dioxide. So stay in the middle, basically, of anything, a sidewalk or a trail. And then my second is tick check after you're outside, even if you're just cutting your lawn or walking your dog. Usually, I think it's fine to do like at the end of all of your outdoor activities. I wouldn't say do it in between, because that's kind of overkill. And then the third would be to physically shower yourself. And that's usually my top three. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, great. How many ticks? I think I saw in May, if I'm not mistaken, you had five ticks that were positive for Lyme. Do you know what the stats are so far? First of all, is that the case? And what are the stats so far for June in terms of ticks positive for Lyme or these other diseases?
So there's a lot of still pending for June, so we haven't gotten a lot of test results back yet. I would imagine it's going to be consistent with the other months, which I think is probably like, what would you say, Amy? Like a third of the ticks actually tested or a third?
Yeah, maybe about, they had six positive for Lyme.
And then that's out of how many?
They had deer ticks, like, oh, well, out of all the ticks, we had about six, over 60 ticks so far.
Okay, but not 60 were tested, right?
So we sent up 60.
Okay, so we sent 60 to the state.
We sent 60 to the state because some of them are like so small or they're over in language where we can't identify it. I actually think you want to get a microscope, right?
I do. We're going to get a microscope in July so that we can try it better.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah.
I don't have a microscope yet. And not, so I need a microscope to be able to see. And it's really helpful to show the residents while they're standing there what their tick looks like. And then we have a chart that shows all the different types of ticks, so they can see themselves. Oh, yeah, I can totally see that's a dog tick. It matches that picture perfectly. And that gives them a little bit of reassurance about what kind of tick they have.
Do you provide any guidance on the removal? And I know you, you're not all doctors, but I know some people remove the tick incorrectly. And I have a little thing that I bought, it's twigs or whatever, that just tells you how to remove the ticks.
The ring, that's, I'll try not to do a full spiel if they're, if, because usually the ticks are already off by the time they come. But at the educational talks, we discussed just getting the body off the head is good enough. Don't go digging into your skin, because we want to observe if there's a rash or any type of skin irritation, because that could be a sign of a bacterial presence. So if you remove the head from the body, it stops feeding, which stops the transmission of the bacteria. So your body will just kind of act like it's a splinter or some other foreign object and just push it out naturally. So that's kind of what we encourage is just get the tick basically dead. Just try to get the body out if you can, try to get the head, but don't, don't dig into your skin. And just tweezers really work, you know? There are some other little nifty.
The tickies.
Tick, I mean, the band, the ticking.
Yeah, my card.
And those are popped underneath the head, so you don't have to worry about it, because it goes underneath and then pops it up. So you're not sitting there with the tweezers trying to.
Right.
Yeah. And we give, if a resident conveys that they've had a really hard time, we have like little kits to give them. We don't give them to everyone that comes in, but just people that like said that they had a hard time getting out.
Oh, cool. Yeah. And then like these other diseases, you said you had six positive for Lyme, all these other that, you know, bacterial diseases. Are there, can you give us the stats on how many tested positive for the other diseases?
In May, we had four positive for Babiosis.
And what is that?
It's another tick.
It's another type of bacteria. And it basically just like is, works the same way Lyme disease does, where it's transmitted from, from gets, they get it from an animal. The tick then is the vector for it and can be transmitted to a human. And the tick's not affected by the bacteria.
And the resident can go to their doctor with this information to try to get the proper treatment?
So why we try to identify it in the office first is because, not all the time, but if the tick has been feeding for a while and we know it's a deer tick, sometimes the primary care physician will want to give a prophylactic dose, one-time dose of doxycycline. I don't really always like discussing that with residents, because I don't, it's really up to their doctor to determine like the course of what they do. They know their medical history the best. Sometimes people can't even have antibiotics. So sometimes if the tick has been feeding for a while, and which means it's more likely that Lyme could have transmitted, whether the tick came back positive or negative for Lyme, they don't want to wait for that all the time, because you usually have to take the dose within 72 hours. So that's why we try to identify for them, so that they can take what the tick was. And we can try to also see if it was engorged or not, not always. But they can take that information and then bring it to talk to their doctor with. So it's just a little bit faster than waiting the one to two weeks for the state lab. And that's really where we kind of try to cut it off, because at the end of the day, we're medical professionals. So I don't want to encourage someone to do something. It's really their primary care physician that has to make that decision.
Yeah, that's super helpful. When the, when the tick comes back or the test comes back and you find out they have these other components to the disease. How long does that take for the resident to get those results so that they can go back to their doctor and say, oh, well, it was tested positive for Lyme, but also we found out, or we thought it was a deer tick?
So if the state lab can take up to two weeks.
Sometimes longer.
Sometimes longer. And that's part of the reason why we haven't been trying to send every little tick to them, because we're trying not to inundate them. You know, we all work together and, and really also, after you miss that prophylactic window, you can't unfortunately test the individual. You kind of have to wait a while to see if they become infected. So it's also a combination of them watching out for symptoms. So if they didn't take the antibiotic and they somehow got infected, you're really watching to see when symptoms begin. You might have to wait a little bit longer after that for them to take some other type of antibiotic as a treatment. So that's why we're trying to do our best to do identification right in the office when they first come in.
Yeah, that's great.
And one of the things I always try to tell residents is you're ahead of the game if you pull the tick off of you. Because Lyme and the other symptoms are so vague. If you just pull the tick off of you and you start to get those vague symptoms, your first thing you're going to do is tell your doctor, I just pulled a tick off of me. Whereas a lot of people who don't know that they got the Lyme tick, those vague symptoms can often go a lot longer before they're found out to be Lyme. So the tick checks are so important, so at least you're aware of the fact. If those symptoms develop, one of the first things in your head is that it's Lyme disease.
Right. So if a resident finds the tick in, in the hours or you're closed, they should just put it into a little bag or something and bring it in when you're opening it or something?
Yeah, first thing tomorrow, the next day.
The next day. And my last question on this, and then we'll get to John, but thank you, first of all, for helping residents. This is like such an amazing service. Is it free for the resident? Is it free for us to get the ticks tested by the state?
It, we pay for the mail, the postage. But we, I, the, the state does not charge us for anything else, I believe, right?
Correct. We pay for the postage and then obviously our time to identify, but we are not currently charging residents for that. Other municipalities do charge their residents.
But and when the resident comes in, you don't charge them for just getting the tick out? Yeah, okay, great. That's wonderful to know. Anything else we want to do on tick education or tick talking before we move on?
No, I'm, I'm just curious, like, what, how, what is the public education part of it? Is it like, you know, is it through the newsletter that you're like putting out information on, on steps and identifying?
Yeah, so I try, try to do like always like a little spiel when someone comes in. And then it's really just constantly offering these talks multiple times a year. We have flyers ready to go for someone who can't attend a talk and they, and people have said to me, I can't attend. So I'm able to say to them, you're going to have to come in, because I can't drive to you, but you can pick up a flyer that has some of the components of the talk on it.
Right.
And one of the things I'm hoping to do in the next month is increase our social media presence. And they start to utilize those.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think that's excellent.
And start just doing more, you know, regular postings about a variety of issues. But focusing in the spring and summertime, a lot on tick education, reminding about tick checks, reminding that we're here to take a look at the ticks.
Yeah.
You know, moms, get busy. You need it back in front of your.
Right, exactly.
Okay, that's right. I need to, you know, and so we are going to be in terms of social media presence.
Is that Facebook and Instagram or both? Do you have your own page?
We have our own Facebook. We're developing our Instagram now.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Excellent. Terrific. All right. Well, thank you so much. So now I think we're going to have a presentation by John Seal, who did present to Town Council an overview of the whole leaf blower issue, everything from health to economics. But we want to focus today primarily because we're in, with the Health Department and our health experts on the effects of leaf blowers, especially gas-powered leaf blowers, on the health of people, residents, children. John, I'm gonna unmute you. Let's see. What does it say? Add to unmute?
I think he can unmute himself.
Okay, there. Yes, I, I unmuted and then I went back on mute. So can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. So thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak and Director Laheny, welcome. Do you have a copy of my presentation?
I do not. No, we don't. We were hoping that you could screen share. We made you the co-host.
Oh, am I the co-host?
Hey, John, can I ask you a question, though? Could you like just briefly explain your background? Because I didn't get that last meeting.
Oh, yes, sure. So I grew up in Old Greenwich, but then was away for a long time working overseas and then moved to New Canaan seven years ago, actually almost eight years ago now. So I have been a resident of the town since 2017.
And are you a scientist? Like, how do you, or is this something that you're just really good at?
It's something that I've done a lot of research about, because when I came back, it was a little bit like one of those sort of Rip Van Winkle experiences, where you go away from a place and then you come back and a lot of things have changed. And one of the things that really had changed for me is I, was the use of these gas leaf blowers and their noise, which was actually kind of new to me. So I just found them really, really aggravating and annoying. But then I've done a lot of research about them subsequently. And really, the more I research them, the more I find out about them, the more alarmed I become about their impact and particularly their impact on health. I really do think that these are a material and underappreciated health risk to the residents of our town, which is really why I wanted to have the opportunity to talk to you today.
Yeah, can I just add something? I did, John, sorry to interrupt. So John was part of our 2022 discussions with the Biologies and Organizes Committee. And Linda Andros, who's passed away unfortunately in the last six months, was the main presenter for this issue. Her background was in advertising and media. So, but, but Linda educated herself and basically compiled empirical research, which is, which is, John is taking the baton from Linda and has compiled and researched and put together a wonderful presentation. So it's really, you know, John is an educated resident who's taken this upon himself to, to try to educate all of us about the issue. And I think he's done a great job. So I want to thank you, John, for putting this together and presenting it again.
Thanks. So, yes, thank you. Let me try to share my screen here. Let's see, let this work.
We can see your screen. We just.
I just need to run this up as, as a slideshow. So let's see, does, how about that?
Perfect. That's great.
Okay, great. So I, I won't go through this sort of line by line, because there's a fair, fair amount here, but I just kind of skim it. But, but please feel free to ask questions. And this is all, part of this is my research and part of it is research of other organizations that have been working on this issue in other communities. There have been particularly a lot of leaf blower restrictions imposed around Boston and also in California. So some of this research comes from the groups that were, that were running those initiatives. So first of all, gas leaf blowers are just horribly, horribly dirty. I mean, a leaf blower creates really more pollution than a pickup truck. And running it, excuse me, a leaf blower for an hour is, creates as much pollution as driving a car 1,100 miles. So these are being run for hours and hours every day in our neighborhoods, in our community. And there's really a disproportionate amount of pollution being generated by gas leaf blowers. And this pollution endangers our health in many ways. Again, I won't go through all of this, but some of the, really the most severe health risks are from the carcinogens in their unburned fuel. And gas leaf blowers have two-stroke engines, which require you to mix oil in with the gas. They're very crude, inefficient engines, so 30% of that oil and gas gets spewed out unburned. And that unburned or partially burned fuel carries a lot of carcinogens. And they're, they are named here. These have all sorts of different health effects, particularly to, in terms of cancer. I was most struck recently in just doing more research about this, about there's a really direct scientific link to breast cancer from the carcinogens present in leaf blower exhaust. But then also damage to liver, kidneys, to brain function. The blowers kick up a lot of microscopic particles, which are known as PM10 and PM 2.5. The numbers just refer to the diameter of the particles in microns. So PM 2.5 is something like 1/40 of the width of a human hair and can easily pass through cell walls. So it has an impact on lung function and lung disease, but then also can affect a lot of other diseases. There's also a particular risk for children, because children are outdoors more. Children breathe a higher volume of air relative to their body weight than adults do. Children tend to be running around more and are active, so are breathing more heavily. And also children's organs and minds are developing. So they can, they're more likely to be affected by the toxins that they inhale. Likewise, there's a particular risk to pregnant women and unborn children. So this is just some of the research that, that I've cited for these health risks. There's a lot more out there. There's a list of sources and references at the back of the presentation. And we can certainly make sure that you have a paper copy of the presentation or a soft copy, so that the, those sources are all available to you. But they're just a wide range of health problems that result from gas leaf blower exhaust. And these are all extensively researched and extensively documented. So this is not just hearsay. I mean, these are serious, I mean, serious high levels of medical research institutes. I mean, the, the one on the left is Mount Sinai Hospital, which has done a lot of research on gas leaf blowers and has come out opposing them for like more than 10 years. They've been very clear about the health, health risks from gas leaf blowers. The ones on the right are various health associations or health researchers. But I would also just point out the one at the top right, which does specifically document the link between unburned hydrocarbons and breast cancer, which I wasn't aware of until recently, but I found really quite, quite shocking. Here again, this is actually taken from the research article about breast cancer and, and gas leaf blower emissions. Obviously, there are a number of different chemicals that they identified as being linked to breast cancer, but two of the ones that they identified as being important are highly present in their exhaust. And I'd go back to the first slide, which just points out how much more of these unburned hydrocarbons come from gas leaf blower exhaust compared to the exhaust of automobiles. Just, it is something like 300 times higher. Another health risk from gas leaf blowers is from their noise. And we've all heard this noise. I mean, it's just part of our daily life in New Canaan. Gas leaf blowers are much louder than electric blowers, for example. And because of the low frequency range of their noise, gas leaf blow noise penetrates much farther and goes through windows, goes through walls. It's very hard to keep it out. The table at the top just is from another study that documented that really over almost any distance from the blower, the gas leaf blowers are up to four times louder than electric. And this is just part of our lived experience in New Canaan. We all know that this is true, because we hear them every day. And that noise has its own set of health impacts and health risks. And particularly for mental health, for depression, for anxiety, for learning disabilities in children, cognitive development of children. So, and these are, these are all documented as well scientifically and medically. And this is something that our families and our children are exposed to every day. Just as an aside, I mean, the worst blowers are to the people who are operating the equipment, because they are carrying these blowers on their backs in eight hours a day. Often, I mean, you, you see them around town. Very often, those workers have no hearing protection, no respiratory protection. They're breathing these fumes. They're hearing this noise. And I mean, in many cases, these are workers who don't have any leverage to ask for occupational safety measures. These are entry-level workers, often with very minimal English. So these are people who are the, the most serious victims of the, of blowers. And I think you really have to ask the question, I mean, do we really want to be asking these people to risk their lives just to blow grass clippings in the summer? So a number of local communities have already recognized these risks and already acted. I mean, the blue stars here are communities that have enacted restrictions on leaf blowers. They're about evenly balanced between bans on summer use and bans that cover two or three seasons. Four communities in Westchester have already banned them year-round. Norwalk has announced that it will be moving to a full-year ban, starting in two years. So there is a definite trend here for communities to realize that, hey, these, these things are bad for us and bad for our health, and we should limit their use. And these are just some of the local communities that have restricted leaf blowers and what they've done. I mean, mostly, they have restricted leaf blowers in the summer, which is what I think New Canaan should do at a minimum, because that summer is when new, leaf blowers are most harmful to our health. We're more likely to be outdoors. Our children are more likely to be outdoors. We are most exposed to the noise. We're most exposed to the fumes. Our windows are open. And also, it's when gas leaf blowers are the least necessary. I mean, nobody needs gas leaf blowers to clear off a sidewalk or blow some grass clippings under a bush. I mean, this is, it's complete overkill. And I mean, the cost benefit of doing that is just totally unbalanced in terms of the health implications of using these machines. So some communities have gone for longer-term bans. I mean, Bedford now has a three-season ban, where they're only allowed in six weeks at the end of fall. And then others in Westchester, like Skarlestal, have, have also three-season bans. So, and these are just some of the sources that I used for this. I had taken out the material that I gave to the Town Council about the economic case for using electric blowers instead of gas. There's a very increasingly compelling case for using electric blowers, that electric blowers are economically viable and sensible and actually in a lot of ways superior to gas with, with the current technology. But I wanted to really focus here on health. So I mean, thank you for your time and attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, John. That was a great presentation and very comprehensive. I opened it up to the meeting if anyone has any questions. Anyone?
I'm just curious, Amy, have you heard what other, like, have you, has this issue come up in your experience?
No, and there's nothing from the state DPH about any guidance or anything on it either.
Have there been any? Have there been any complaints to the health department about any of this these issues?
Um well, you're not. I have I not had any about leaf blowers. Um. I've had complaints about air quality from wildfire.
Yeah.
Which I definitely don't have. Uh but not from leaf blowers. Um. Any noise complaint we get um has to go through the police department, um but we haven't had noise complaints about leaf blowers.
What is that procedure of going through the police department if there's a noise complaint? They don't call you, they call them first? And then do you get notified of it?
No.
You don't? Okay.
No.
Okay. Um I have a question for John. Um John, you talked a lot about the uh effects of the. Offgassing of the two-stroke engines. What about the um you know, in my experience, a lot of people use pesticides. And you'll see like legally, there has to be something put on the lawn that said this lawn has been treated by pesticides. Is there any research on the effects of the leaf blowing, especially in the summer of the pesticide residue that's on lawns? Because I know when the leaf blowing is happening, sometimes it's a lot of dirt that's being, you know, when it's dry out and people are outside. Is there any research on that and the effects of that on people?
Uh well, y- yes, I mean. I mean, that's definitely a risk because the air coming out of these gas blowers is moving at like two hundred miles an hour. Uh so uh especially when the ground is dry, as you say, then it and I mean, then pesticides or herbicides have been applied to the grass. Uh then that all gets blown up into the clouds of dust and and spread around. And likewise, other things that you don't want to be breathing, like particles of animal feces. Uh things that also get blown up into the air and that we breathe and that we're more likely to breathe in the summer because our windows are open. Uh so uh the I went back to this because the Mount the Mount Sinai research piece does. Uh particularly mention that. Uh I don't think I quoted that section of it here. Uh but uh it's it's in their original document, which is in the uh which is in the in the sources at the back. Uh so yes, I mean, that's definitely a an aspect of this and 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 an aspect. That I think makes it more urgent to do something about it during the summer. I mean.
Right. Okay, thank you. So I guess my question to our health. Department is if there's no guidance from the state, can you get involved in education at all? Um or in any way so that residents know when they make these decisions, what possible health effects would be? Or is it something that we can do as a town or is it only something that you can do if the state is directing you?
Um it's probably something that we wouldn't focus on as a health department because we do have so many other public health issues that we really um that are more. Uh more of our focus. So you know, the ticks obviously, and then we also have all of our vaccine preventable diseases that are now kind of flaring up on us. And other things like that. So we're trying to focus more on the traditional public health.
Mm hmm.
Um responsibilities and roles um and really making sure that people remember why public health is is around. And all of the good things we've done through the years that seem to have been somewhat forgotten lately. Um and really focus on bringing it back to the original core.
Right.
And making sure that that foundation is back where it was. Um so then we could start to go off to other issues.
Right. So my thought is if this continues, we you know, town councils meeting with all different committees on this particular issue. If we did have like an education session or a consortium, would you be willing to be part of it? Or I mean, to me, it seems like we if we're bringing all the other departments in, it would be good to have health there.
It's probably not something that's in our expertise. Um a lot of what was discussed is about in uh. The person who's operating it, the operator safety, that's really more of an OSHA and a toxicology background. That's not really something that we have focused on at a local level.
Mm hmm.
Um and even air quality and climate change has just recently come into public health and it's not something that we have focused on a lot. Um and that's just starting to come out from the state about the different air quality levels and alerts a lot of it in response to the wildfire. Debacles that are happening.
Right.
Uh so this isn't something that we're really probably ready or prepared to be able to speak. Well enough on that I would feel comfortable presenting or answering.
I know, but yeah, John did mention a lot of the points about the carcinogens and the risk to children and pregnant moms and you know, so there are.
Breast cancer.
Yeah, breast cancer.
There's a breast cancer in Fairfield County.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, so I just wonder.
So I would think though the breast cancer one was in association with women who were operating the leaf blowers.
Uh John, can you clarify that?
It looked like that article was about operation because it says occupational studies.
Uh well, uh.
You had a whole list. You had a whole slide just about breast cancer. Could you go back?
But that's actually, I think, up up there now. Uh yeah, I mean, this is. Relative to I I think this was occupational studies about their exposures. Uh but I the concern is that we're all exposed to these. Uh to these toxins, right, to the benzene, the organic solvents and what they call P A Hs. Uh which are these unburned hydrocarbon products. We're we're all exposed to them. So we may not be exposed to them at the same level of working in a, I don't know, factory that's uh where we're breathing them all day long. Uh but it can't be helpful to be exposed to them as much as we are. And we all, I mean, I I smell those fumes every day uh from either one neighbor or the other neighbor. Uh and some somebody around me is always, I mean, every single day running a blower. So I mean, I would suspect that's true for a lot of residents of New Canaan.
And and the letters that we got, it it seemed like the primary complaint. I mean, the letters that we got, I mean, it was like eighty something and it was over eighty percent. You know, against um well, in in favor of a ban, let's put it that way. Um and the the biggest complaint is noise. It's more than anything. Everyone acknowledges their health, but it's noise. But noise does have an impact on mental health. So. I don't I think that's something to be considered. Quality of life. That was mentioned in all the letters too, is quality of life and mental health.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
So.
Because if if this isn't a health department issue, is it means pollution uh should would that come under another department?
So Connecticut is set up a little bit unique from a lot of other places. And so. Some of the things we do are done globally in the municipality level and some of the things are done at the state level. So when you're starting to talk about pollution. Um toxicology and things like that that require a very serious expertise, that's all done at the state level. Whereas the locals are going to focus on more of your day-to-day. Septics, wells, environmental health, ticks.
Okay.
Vaccines um and things that have traditionally been done at a local level.
Right. That makes sense. Is there a state um expert that we could have?
There is a toxicology um department.
Okay.
Um and you know, in various roles I've had over the years, I've had had opportunities to work with them and they are very helpful. I don't know if leaf blowers is something that they have discussed.
Is it possible for you to get back to us on that to see who in the state could be in contact to maybe um you know, participate in the panel of some kind or advise? Um you know, uh. The people that are making the decision about whether there will be restrictions or not, which we're, you know. Researching all this stuff now, but it would be helpful just to have someone from a health perspective, um you know, weigh in on it. Okay.
Um oh, sorry to interrupt. Do you know what other towns use? I don't believe health departments were involved with other towns' bands.
Um I know that there was an involvement in Greenwich that didn't go very well, and I don't know all the details. That's the only case study that I know of, but they were originally involved. I don't know about, I don't know if John knows in Norwalk. Stanford, Westport, which all have bans and you know, thirty towns in Westchester County. I don't know the involvement of the health department. Do you know any of that, John?
I don't, but I can certainly look it up. Uh.
I believe they are, yeah, I did check Google. Yeah, uh Greenwich is was involved because a lot of municipalities, when they did their original noise ordinances back in like the seventies or whatever. Would put noise under public health because we kind of are the catchall at times.
Yeah.
But over the years, the noise ordinance has been referred back to the police department because they're available at the times when the noise becomes the issue. And health departments are not.
Right, right.
So most noise ordinances are now associated with police departments.
Right. So why was Greenwich Health involved in?
They had to relinquish and undo their noise ordinance because it had been under the purview of the health department.
Right. Oh, I see. So their charter was different.
That and then they passed a new noise ordinance, including the leaf blowers, I believe, that went to the police department.
Got it. Okay.
I think there's actually some towns that don't have a noise ordinance at all.
Right.
So I just came from Monroe. Monroe does not have a noise ordinance.
Right. Oh, that's interesting. That is interesting.
The state and half the town wants it and half the town doesn't.
Oh, that is very interesting.
That is interesting.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
It's really a community specific, which is great that the council's talking about it. It should be a decision made by the community and those who represent.
Yeah.
More than anybody else.
Monroe is is a very rural.
Very rural.
So in New Canaan, you've got the village of New Canaan, you've got point five acres, and so it's very concentrated. And sometimes there can be up to five leaf blowers on a point five acre property, or if you live in a condo complex or. You're surrounded by, you know, this contiguous property. Sometimes you could be seven or eight properties could all be right there at the same time. So but I I understand what you're saying. Okay, I don't. Does anyone else have any other comments before we move on? I think vaccines is the next.
Yeah, well, I just just want to come. Yeah, I think the state is is considering a ban.
I have heard that.
Yes. So eventually it will, I mean, I think the tide is coming, that it is eventually gonna come. Um so it's something that we'll have to deal with sooner or later.
Yeah, can California's done that and but Connecticut, I don't know the status of where they are on the vote. I think it was proposed and it wasn't voted on.
I don't think it it there. It's in consideration. I don't think there's any legislation yet, but it's a consideration.
Right, right.
It's in committee, I believe, but also the Connecticut proposed ordinance only applies to use by state agencies. Uh so it doesn't.
Oh, right.
We regulate, say, landscapers or uh used by homeowners. Uh so.
That's a good point.
Or the for our purposes here in New Canaan, it wouldn't really have a material impact.
Yes, that makes that's a very good point, John. Thank you for adding that to our discussion. Okay, I think we're gonna move on to the last item on our agenda, which is vaccines. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. And uh I will send this uh my mate, well, maybe Kim, if you have it, I uh I will let you pass it on.
Yeah. Okay, sure. Thanks, John. Thank you, John.
Bye.
We were just curious if there is any change in um. What your overall policy is vaccines, because I know there's some mixed messages coming from, you know, the national level. So has anything changed in terms of how we're doing things here?
Um we still have the vaccine for children's program, which we've had for a few years.
Two.
Two years. Um and that is vaccines that are eligible to those under the age of eighteen. Um and those are primarily the ones needed for school or daycare.
Those are those.
Those are free. They're free. Um most children will get them at the pediatrician, but we do have some cases with people moving in. Or pediatricians who don't have the supply, where we will be able to vaccinate and help them and make sure they can get to school. Um with the right vaccines and the right dosing and the right amounts.
And what what is the messaging for COVID now? Because I think it's all confused. I'm confused.
Um COVID is still very confused. I think the state is waiting to kind of. See what happens. They haven't come out with any other messaging other than what we heard from the federal government um that it's not being recommended now. Um for basically the general population.
Yeah.
Um and so it's wait and see to see what the insurance companies do and then to see what the state does with their messaging. Obviously, we always have promoted seasonal vaccinations to help you, you know. Maybe it doesn't always prevent it, but at least it could help you with the, you know, seriousness of the illness and maybe make it go by a little faster, hopefully.
Right.
Um that being said, they didn't change the formulation um that they were supposed to. So it would be the same as what you got last year. So there is a lot of discussion, I think, still going on um with the state policymakers on what they want to start to recommend.
All right. Now, did we pay for the vaccines for the vaccines for children program or is that state funded?
It's actually F D A funded, state state funded, sorry. It's a federal funded program as of now.
Okay, and what about the flu vaccine or the seasonal vaccines?
Um so for adult seasonal vaccines, any vaccines that we would purchase, we would have to pay for ourselves.
The town of New Canaan.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I believe we have under discussions to lower the amount that had been purchased in the past.
Mm hmm.
And just do our most vulnerable populations.
Uh would be like homebound people because most people, you can go get it from C V S or Walgreens.
Yeah.
And or your doctor's office and it's covered by insurance.
Mm hmm.
I really think this year we should just only do individuals that can't leave their house or are too vulnerable to go into a pharmacy. And and really reduce the number of vaccines we purchase because everyone else, if you can drive to my cottage, you can usually get to Walgreens or C V S.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
But we'll keep you updated with that so that if we do.
Yeah, we're waiting to decide who I have to say. Flu dosing and orders and did they get it in in time? Are things gonna end up being delayed? So there's still a lot of unknown surrounding vaccines out and the meeting today is still going on, so.
Right. Okay, so so for residents looking for guidelines, they should talk to their doctors rather than?
Uh well, it's way too early in the season anyway. So I think as we come into August. And that's usually when we start to hear more messaging coming out of the state and the state. Um because that's the beginning of the season, when we want to start people to start getting the flu shots.
Mm hmm.
The summer is typically spent kind of monitoring what's happening in the southern hemisphere and seeing what, you know, we potentially could be looking at. So I would say towards the end of August, we're gonna have a better idea of what this year's recommendations are um and what's gonna look like. Because it's definitely gonna look different. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else that anyone wants to add for a re-ger? Hey, can I make a legal motion to adjourn? I need a second. Unless I have to adjourn. All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Oh, now there you go.